I will break down the issue, so whenever you're ready to do that.
Good. Get some. Everybody, you are. Quarter. Good. What's the call order? This is the German Village Meeting Commission. Today is May 3, 2023. It is 4:04 PM. We're here at 111 Front Street, second floor, room 204. The next business meeting will be Wednesday, May 24, 2023, at 12:00 PM. Here at 111 North Front Street, second floor, room 204. And the next hearing will be Wednesday, June 7, 2023, at 4:00 PM. Here at 111 North Front Street, second floor, room 204. Go ahead and swear in step. Do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yeah, please state your name to the record.
And then go there, see.
Very much.
One more person. One more square.
There we go. Do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. More than ever.
Thank you very much.
Better.
Quick note for the agenda. We are going to have new business at the end of the meeting, by some bylaw updates, and we'll be doing some administrative voting discussions internally. But first up, we have the zoning update. I'm going to do the zoning code progress from staff.
Hello, all. Mark Trebilla, Planning Division Administrator. And as always, thanks for your services, commissioners. And I just had probably about just a few minutes points that I'm going to read through on the zoning code update.
Real quick, you can make sure you have your point into the mic there, just so that everybody can hear you on there.
Okay.
Take up.
Yes, is that good? All right, thanks. And you all have a report in front of you. And anybody in the audience that doesn't have a postcard with basic information on this presentation, I put a stack by the door there. I could hand you some on the way out. So that's your information. And as I'm speaking, feel free to jump in and ask any questions. I'm more or less going to read off the script if you'll allow me to do that. So I'm here to present a brief overview on the city's update to the zoning code update, which is being called Zone In. I don't need to tell you all that the city and region are growing and is going to continue to grow. There are several planning efforts that are underway citywide in order to address this growth, including the city's housing strategy, LinkUS, sustainability planning, and this effort, which would modernize the city's zoning code. The city zoning code has not been comprehensively updated in 70 years. And a 2021 assessment of the zoning code determined that it is really not supporting our community's aspirations to be an equitable, thriving city. And both Mayor Ginter and City Council have repeatedly expressed this as a top priority to update the zoning code. We are starting on the city's primary corridors. The size of the city and the complexity of zoning itself call for a phased approach. And as stated in the report you're looking at and in presentations, you know, where to start was really a very challenging and the primary question. So we are starting on what has been identified as 62 quote-unquote "main streets," or our primary corridors, and commercial centers that make the most sense for where to start the update process. So primary corridors, you're familiar with, you know, High Street, Parsons Avenue, Livingston Avenue. Data, policy, and public input all tell us that the corridors are the best place to start modernizing our zoning code. These areas have the greatest development capacity to deliver the housing, mobility, and employment opportunities our community needs in a way that is economically and environmentally sustainable. The current zoning code is restricting our community's potential. The corridors are critical to supporting thoughtful, equitable growth, but they're not delivering the results under the current zoning. If you look at the 145 miles that these 62 primary corridors represent, 80% of the properties facing the street are currently zoned with a 35-foot height limit, as you very well may know. And that's the same as the, you know, the single-family areas that are within our neighborhoods. Additionally, in 80% of these areas, housing is not permitted on the ground floor or not permitted at all. So even though research like Insight 2050 and a variety of community planning efforts over the years have suggested that the corridors are the best place for denser, taller housing and housing developments, the zoning code doesn't allow for this development. So there's a disconnect between our planning and research and what the zoning code actually allows for. All of these challenges point to the fact that our zoning code is inhibiting the housing creation our city urgently needs. So how were these areas identified? The ZonIn team went through a really pretty detailed process, including reviewing existing zoning, current commercial zoning overlays, mixed-use recommendations from area planners, code of us routes, both existing and planned, future LinkUS corridors, and site-specific considerations in order to come up with the recommendation to start with these six. Growth policy and the project manager on this effort. And I could tell you. Self, including on weekends. Looking at every single part of it for these corridors. So this is receivable contention. Deal with you to sit to this, this part of the project. So where we're at now, some final comments is you could learn more by going to the project website, ZonIn Columbus. Email updates, if you haven't already done so. And I think both the report or these cards have the QR code that would bring you to the site where you could sign up for the email updates. This is just the first phase. Ultimately, the zoning code update will, you know, seek to rezone other areas in the city. We're just starting with the corridors. And as part of the starting point, in addition to going to our commissions and area commissions to a variety of neighborhood bodies, there's community workshops and meetings that are rolling out now. There was one at Reed Center last night. And on June 1, there's going to be a meeting at Shiller Park at 6 o'clock. So that's a really, you know, obvious opportunity for you all and anybody else in your neighborhood to please attend. Mentioned mailing list, you know, inviting others, gaining access to the calendar and so forth through the QR code. And those are my words. Happy to answer any questions you might have either now or later.
I do have one. Looking at the map and reading, everything has come through the public before. It seems like the one piece that's really going to, that this phase of the zoning is going to affect our jurisdiction is Livingston.
Yeah.
And we have the South Side of Livingston, North Side is outside of Trebilla.
Solution at this point. You know, we say 35 feet because, you know, it's just, it's sort of a telling point of like the commercial corridors are the same height as the neighborhood. And, you know, years passed, it was zoning allowed for taller. You know, if you go back to the 1950 zoning code or what have you. That being said, there's no solution that's suggested. We know it's going to happen. It's going to be a, you know, transitions. If there is additional height, you know, how does it transition? Everything that you all really deal with on a regular basis is going to be the discussion. Yeah.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I just didn't say he's made a statement with their housing, what they approved at the corner of the Old Grocer Store. You've already made a statement, what you think about us.
Well, I mean, I would say that everything's a fresh start. I mean, that case is that case and understood your point. But that being said, you know, what happened there was not this process. This is, I guess I would ask, ask you, and we have to all challenge ourselves to say we're starting fresh at this point. And this is, you know, primarily addressing the corridors, although that is a commercial, I don't know, we'd call that a commercial center. It was a commercial site. But generally, we're in the corridors here, High Street, Livingston, so forth.
And I'm using that as an example of what you might have in mind for Livingston.
It's, it's all the more reason to be engaged, I guess, at the end of the day. Right, right. But point taken. And all any, you know, I'm, we're all taking notes on this. So, you know, that, that will be shared. You know, that point will be shared with the team.
So, so in connection with all of this, I'd just like to reiterate Commissioner Hartke's concerns. And so I'm a little bit concerned about the fresh start. So fresh start and historic preservation sound like they're horribly at odds with one another. So I hope the city will keep that, keep that in mind. My question is, are you acquainted with other cities that have gone through this process of revamping their zoning codes? And how those cities have managed the relationship between the update of the zoning code and historic neighborhoods in those communities? And does Columbus intend to follow the model set by those other municipalities?
Yeah, yeah. A fresh start was really just intended to say, you know, this is day one on this project, but, but not intended to suggest that we're forgetting history or, or preservation by any means. I mean, you all know that the Planning Division staffs all of our preservation commissions. And while, you know, I'm a planner, not a preservation planner, we have, you know, this, this is part of our core. And will represent it throughout. I do know, so I'm not managing this project. So I can't speak to, you know, myself that's being expert here, but the team.
You're just the messenger.
I'm a messenger in this case, although I'm also, you know, representing as the team is of the importance of preservation as the zoning code is updated. So it's another key topic. I mean, like heights. I mean, are we going to deal with heights on Livingston Avenue is to be determined. You know, we're not, we don't anticipate changing the commission area. So your all's role and what's happening is, is not, you know, is there and is going to continue to be there. You know, what will happen with preservation outside and other parts of the area? We think we need to be, you know, very thoughtful about, obviously, because as growth occurs on any given day, we're dealing with projects where buildings are, you know, are subject to development. And so we know that the team that's Lisa Wise Consulting is, Lisa Wise herself is from Cincinnati, but her firm is out in California, and she's working with local teams in Chicago. So there's, they are, they are certainly have both done zoning code updates in other cities themselves and are aware of. And we are sending them information all the time on topics like this that they need to be on top of. So.
So they'd be in a position to explain how those other communities have dealt with historic neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
Where this has happened before.
Yeah, absolutely. Opticos Consulting is one of the teams that's working with Lisa Wise, and they are sort of the promulgators of what's their representatives of missing middle housing, which is, you know, a historic housing fabric. The reason why it's called missing middle is because historically it was part of all of our neighborhoods and how it sort of disappeared from the, you know, current fabric. So I know they're a team of urban designers that are well-versed in preservation. So absolutely.
Will that be at the public meetings?
If Opticos themselves, if Jen Saddle is the, their representative of the Chicagory, if she's at every meeting or not, I can't say. I can find out.
Be good to know.
All right. Well, appreciate your time. Thanks for coming in and getting us the update. And we look forward to hearing more.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. See you all later.
All right. Moving on to the rest of the agenda, we'll start off with the approval of staff approvals. Staff approvals begin on page.
Commissioner Hartke?
Yes.
Real quick, before we do continue, would we like to do the bylaw update discussion real quick? We discussed it at the business meeting.
If we can pull forward?
Yes.
Okay, so at the end?
Oh, no.
We can, we can pull it forward. That's fine.
Yes, thank you. Sorry for making a decision.
Yep. Come on up.
Yes.
Go ahead. I can get you squinched. If you can raise your right hand. Do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, and I'm Kimberly Bernamachie, Deputy Historic Preservation Officer. I just want to start off, thank you everybody for letting me squeeze in here real quick. I greatly appreciate it and hope this will be on the quicker side. So I am tasked with doing a bylaw update for all of the boards and commission. Planning is first step in this effort is to review and update the form requirements. Any updated language is to be written to ensure clarity and the ability for each board and commission to conduct business in case it has vacancies. In recent years, planning has focused on recruiting commissioners to help ensure that all commissioners are seated at full capacity, but there are still times when multiple vacancies can occur. The proposed updated form language will help assure that all boards and commissions are able to conduct business in a legally sensible manner and to create additional inconsistencies between all boards and commissions. So the German Village Commission's current bylaws, very important, is four members shall constitute a forum. The affirmative vote of no less than four members shall be required for approval. A recommendation of the commission may be made by a majority of those present. Upon presentation to at least a forum commission, the failure of a question to receive the required form vote shall constitute denial of the application or recommendation against the requested action by the commission. The proposed language is consistent with Columbus City Code, Section 3119.07. The commission shall take official action only by a majority of members voting on the question on the table during a public meeting at which there is a forum. A forum exists when a majority of commissioners appointed to and serving the commission are present at a meeting. If a forum is left, no business can be acted on other than two during the day. And this is just intended to be a first freedom, but do I have any questions I can field for?
So what's the purpose of this? Why are we changing it?
So in case the commission is down to say four members, it gives people a little bit of leeway, as well as consistency for all of the commissions, as well as it goes back, it references a section of city code.
Yeah. So my, my point is, this administration or administration can totally wipe away the commission authority by just not appointing people and getting it down to two people that do what they want. And you've got a forum. I think it'd be better if the city did its responsibility and appoint people to the commissions that are missing and leave it the way it is.
I understand. Our intent is for those commissions that do get to the forum to give the commissioners, to get to say four or twelve members a little bit of breathing room until they get appointed.
But there's some trouble when it gets down to four, when there's supposed to be seven. The administration hasn't done anything about appointing people.
At the end of May, this commission will be down to five.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I.
Yes, and I'm, I'm aware.
And it's been over a year. And my point is, this, this solves your problem in a way. But when it's down to three, you've got two people making decisions for the whole commission, when it should be seven.
For the whole city.
For the whole city.
Yes, that's not.
So you are basically undoing the commissioning process by doing this. You're taking the voice of the people and the commissioners that are elected down to a smaller, smaller number of people making the decision.
I think that point's been made. This is a first reading. Anything else you have?
No, anything else for me?
The other commissioners have any comments? Thank you very much. All right. We'll save the preliminary officer voting discussion towards the end in order to have the meeting run quicker. So move ahead to the approval of staff approvals. And that begins on page. Eight of your agenda. Any recusals on the death proofs?
Yeah, I recuse myself on 607 Mohawk Street and 634 Mohawk Street.
I have a recusal on 595 South Sixth Street. For staff approvals.
Carol, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
I am good as well. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to rat by the staff approved applications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it. Motion passes. Moving on to the minutes in the last meeting, April 5, 2023?
Move to rat a vote.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it. Motion passes. Moving on to the applications for certificates of appropriateness. Item 1, GV-23-05-021, 207 East Whittier. Ramona. Once you're all settled, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah, please state your name to the record.
Catherine Polly Ramona.
Thank you very much.
This application is for landscaping. To remove the evergreen trees on the east side of the property along the fence and replace with smaller arborvitae. To replace the existing side yard fence with a cap and rail style fence to be six feet high. The staff analysis is at the May business meeting, the commission requested an arper's report that discussed the need for removing the trees and requested information on when the trees were planted. Staff found photos from 1995 showing young trees planted along the fence line in a similar location to the existing evergreen trees. And the applicant estimates the trees were planted in the late 1980s through the 1990s. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of any and all clarification to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of certificate with the following conditions. And the recommended condition is that the applicant should paint the fence or stain with an opaque stain. And the paint color to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of certificate. The basis for the staff recommendation is 311613 Standards for Site Improvement A. German Village Guidelines Exterior Constellation Spences and Walls 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Anything else to add?
No, I think that's good.
Questions, comments from the commission? If there's none, is there a motion?
Yeah, item GV2305021, 207 East Whittier Street, I move to approve this submitted.
Second.
Are there any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Okay, same question.
Moving on to item 2, GV-23-05-022, 804 South Pearl Street. Once you're settled, if you please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name to the record.
John Quinn.
Thank you. Paul?
This application is for landscaping. The proposed work description is to replace five old Emerald Green Arboretum that were three feet tall that have been removed with nine taller, healthier Emerald Green Arboretum, that would be five to six feet tall. To add three green giant arboretum on the east side of the backyard, probably six feet tall. To remove a dying Japanese maple tree that's approximately four feet tall and install six lime-lived hydrant of the long.
My bad.
The staff analysis is at the May business meeting, the commission found no questions or comments for the applicant. The staff recommendation, the staff recommends approval of any and all clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of certificate. And the basis for the staff recommendation is 311613 Standards for Site Improvement A.
Anything else to add? Any questions, comments from the commission? Just to make a point on the application that the more are going in than were taken away, it's supposed to be that game. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, item GV2305022, I move to approve this submitted. Second.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it. Motion passes. Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number 3, GV-23-05-023, 275 East Whittier.
I'm going to recuse myself in this one. Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name to the record.
John Stevenson, attorney for the applicant.
This application is for variance recommendations. The proposed work description is a variance recommendation for 3332.388 Private Garage. Requires capital space in the garage to connect directly with capital space in the dwelling unit. While the applicant proposes capital space above the attached garage, but it's not connected to capital space with the single unit dwelling. And 3332.05A4 Area District Lot With Requirements Requires minimum lot width of 50 feet, while the applicant proposes to maintain the existing lot width of 31 feet. And 3332.14R2F Area District Requirements Require 6,000 square foot block of single family dwelling, while the applicant proposes to remain the existing lot size of 2,883 square feet. 3332.25 Maximum Side Yard Required Requires in some of the widths of the side yards to equal or exceed 20% of the width of the lot. The requirement of 6.2 feet for 31-foot wide lot. While the applicant proposes to maintain a maximum side yard of 5.4 feet for the existing single unit dwelling. 3332.26C1 Minimum Side Yard Permitted Requires minimum side yard of three feet for lots 40 feet wide or less. While the applicant proposes to maintain a minimum side yard of .9 feet on the west side of existing single unit dwelling. And 3332.26E Minimum Side Yard Permitted Requires minimum distance for garage of three feet from the interior side lot line. While the applicant proposes the distance of 1'11 inches from the east property line. And 3332.38G Private Garage Which Limits the garage height to 15 feet, while the applicant proposes a garage height of 24 feet. Staff analysis, at the May business meeting, the commission requested clarification on what the existing variances are and what variances are. At the May, at the May business meeting, the commission requested clarification on what the existing variances are and what variances are part by the garage. Um, so for three, 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 two point three eight H, this variance applies to the garage. Three, 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 two point zero five eight four, this variance applies to the existing house. Three, 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 two point one four, this variance applies to the existing house. Three, 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 two point two five, it applies to the existing house. Three, 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 two point two six C one, this variance applies to the existing house. Three, 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 two point two six E, this variance applies to the garage. And three, 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 two point three eight G, this variance applies to the garage. The staff recommendation is that the staff recommends the commission recommend approval as submitted. The basis for staff recommendation is three, one, one, six, thirteen standards for site improvements. And it is somewhat consistent with German Village guidelines for zoning variances on page one thirty-nine.
Anything else to add?
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from the commission?
Just confused why it's bad.
I am too.
When we, uh, after we got the last C O A, we went to staff to have them draft up our ordinance and they, uh, identified some variances that really go to the house or, for instance, the first variance listed there. We had just listed as three, three, two point three eight. And they asked that we specify subsection, those kinds of things.
So mostly, mostly adding the existing house and a couple of clerical changes, is what I'm hearing.
Correct, yeah. And none of the design has changed for most, for before.
And consistent with previous recommendations.
Correct.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Habitable space. How is zoning interpreting that? What's, what's driving that?
So while the applicant doesn't intend to use the room for anything that would be habitating, per staff's direction, any, uh, space above a garage in German Village needs to seek a council variance to permit habitable space.
Cause in the past, we, we, this has come up a couple of times. In the past, we have required either kitchen or a bath and not both. Um, and zoning has interpreted that to, to not be habitable space if there wasn't both a kitchen and a bath. So just trying to get to the root of why zoning is now calling this habitable space when it hadn't before.
Which the application shows, actually.
Yeah, the application says nothing. So that's, that's why not sure we're triggered it.
Which, my understanding is just in within German Village District. If you have a garage that's separated and has enough space, space above it that's going to be finished in somewhere, then they're going to require that you seek the, uh, use variance that would permit habitable space, which requires you to go to council as opposed to just going through V C A.
This is the same thing we've seen a couple of times recently though. There, there was one recently that had been coming up.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to figure out if there's any kind of information to come to light that would explain why this, this is happening now.
New staff, staff members or something like that.
It's the future. They can have the kitchen or bathroom and make it actual little space.
Appears to be what is.
Definition. He's saying you need finished space above the garage. What they put up there as long as they finish it.
We, you still have to seek the variance though.
Right, but if we give right the variance, that means it's not just a storage place and workout room. It's now a lot, like air and B.
And I, it's a part of me.
Where the lot's split, it would be a separate half of the whole building sold as a, you know, non sale.
It might not be about.
Still have a great large kitchen and it's bathroom by definition, but not anymore. These are your room, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was gonna say, so the concern is does grantedness that allow them the opportunity to put a kitchen in or and bath in, which then we would have no recourse because of interior improvement to, to improve and operate.
They've already done the variance.
And I, I will say that it's a, it's a slippery slope. Um, since it is R two F down here. Having two habitable spaces on a lot is not against zoning, so the question is what? I struggle with that conversation, so. There's some.
Oh yeah, no, of course, I didn't want to interrupt. Um, I will say for past nine meetings, we've had, you know, a living space above that has had just a kitchen or bathroom. This has made our patient that has been with the variances. But it's a, it's a good question about, you know, what would possibly happen for, um, just to note that.
Yeah, well, you know, we totally clear, we originally applied for a V C A application and we were willing to commit to not having habitable space above the garage. Uh, but we were directed to go to this room.
Well, I said, understood.
Yeah.
So I, I'm, all these facts, personally, not, uh, against it, I, I would make the request to staff, it would be good to have a conversation with V C A, um, just to understand what the interpretation is and what's, what's driving all this stuff, just because things are changing.
Yeah.
I want to make sure we're staying ahead of it, we're not giving more information to others.
And that would bring in our group of having a space.
That might just be a, a, a me conversation with them, if you can help facilitate that. Good. Any other questions or comments? Will motion to recommend item three, G B dash two, three, dash zero, five, dash three, three.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Against? Want to guess? Eyes have it. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I move to excuse myself just for a little. Yes. Um, I would say let's just take a quick five and we'll come back.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself in the next application.
Okay. We can take a five minute recess, uh, and Commissioner McQuarrie will not be on when we get back.
Sounds good.
Commissar comments. The commission questioned the reasoning for a twenty-four inch planting bed and stated that covering for the basement foundation was not an applicable reason for planting bed height. Commissioners commented that it would be better to address the issue with the foundation and concrete wall when we cover the issues. The planting bed will bring dirt up to the edge of the basement. The commission asked for more information on how the aluminum planting bed is anchored and the gauge of the metal. Some commissioners suggested the material and design may not withstand the freeze saw cycle. Commissioners suggested that planting boxes might be more appropriate or the design could include grade level soil and edging with pole plants. And this would be more appropriate. Commissioners agree that the aluminum edging at its proposed height is not compatible with the structure or guidelines. At the main business meeting, the commission clarified there will only extend the work within the property line. The commission previously approved the site plan on landscaping and design in G B twenty-three dash zero four dash zero zero nine A. The staff recommendation is only going to be under boxes along the cedar and verdure. And just for note, two brick steps and tubes were confirmed in the G B dash twenty-one dash zero four dash zero. Staff recommendations approved. And the basis for staff recommendation is three one one six thirteen.
Anything else to add? Any questions or comments to the commission? There are none. Is there a motion?
On the G B twenty-three oh four zero zero nine P. I move to approve as submitted. Thank you for your.
G two three dash zero four dash zero two one. Any questions? Item number two.
This is for exterior building alteration of the garage admission. The proposed work is to add a permanently four feet to the overall depth of the existing garage on the properties that will be able to cover the garage. The extended portion of the garage will be finished to match the existing and a new membrane room will be installed. Existing concrete driveway and apron will be replaced with a new concrete extended. The garage door, side door and window will be replaced. The wood panel garage door is ten feet. It needs to be larger than the door opening and it will be equipped. Reserves your panel garage door with low headroom. The man door to be a new wood, wood four panel door with transom. White stucco to mark existing to install. The every little bronze gooseneck outdoor wall scents will be added above the garage door. A new fence will be added to the south property line to match existing. There will be a new half round aluminum gutters in the east elevation to be painted to match. And you're. Place a banner board on the elevation of new line by ten painted to match. The following is taken from the now approved April fifth, twenty twenty-three German Village Commission hearing minutes. Commissioner comments. The commissioner, the commission found the garage had evidence of being altered over time, did not find the existing garage marks for nineteen forty sand. The sandboard maps were determined to be unreliable for determining the original footprint of the garage. Commission asked occasion when bedding material was stucco on concrete block or it was. The commission discussed that the garage would be extended on the north side rather than the proposed south side. Some commissioners thought the north side was more interesting. Had, um, had, had more interesting detailing with textured block. Some commissioners thought that moving south was less appropriate. The commission commented that the. Sure the addition could remain with the existing if the applicant amended design to insert the addition. The addition should be just enough to add depth to the garage. And the commission commented that the existing parapet at materials would stay in its same location. At the main, at the main business meeting. For the height, the commission asked for the height of the joists above the garage door. Verification was requested concerning how the garage door cracking. Will work with the designs. The door height is not. Not throughout the line. The commission requested more information on the proposed garage door. What is the model and style of the garage door? The commission had some concern of removing the parapet detail. The applicant responded with an updated drawing on page. Seven, the garage door can be located with a cedar wood panel garage door with low headroom. And the applicant responded to the parapet detail with the following. We have studied keeping the parapet in place. This will require a significant steel beam to support the parapet so that a garage door can operate. That the. Move exactly the exact parapet to the new wall or B, you can start the old parapet out of wood construction. So that it would, it could be supported with a wood beam instead. Staff recommendation, staff recommends to continue the application to allow time for the applicant to trim the more compatible design for the historic parapet. The basis for the staff recommendation is three one one six eleven standards for alteration. One, three, four and ten. And the German Village Guidelines alterations to existing structures additions. One, two, three, four and five.
Anything else to add?
No.
Questions, comments in the commission?
So we're clearing the section showing. That is a recreation of the parapet and then to allow for that steel beam that is shown in the application currently.
No, this section is showing that we're, we will try to keep the existing parapet and support it in place while we put the steel beam. There's really more of a question. If the contractor, if it can be reconstructed, that'll just make it easier. But this is showing that we.
So the application as submitted is keeping the parapet. Okay, simple. Thank you. That would be approved. That's what we're right now unless we decide otherwise. Disagreement.
Thank you. So as much as we like additions and stuff, we always like the original building to be readable, et cetera. And I think your southwest corner, it's just an extension of that wall is obliterating that original corner of the garage. And I would suggest that you pull that back so that corner is visible.
Right, which we have, we talked about that the first time we. Was decided that two inches was enough.
Don't think that's going to do anything. I would suggest that where you've got your south wall, your return wall is perpendicular to that. And not on the.
Just on that side.
I think it should be on both, but. I think you don't, but I think it doesn't matter. Got to stick. Stick with whatever it tends.
So it just comes out straight.
Go backwards, right?
I know I can do that on the west side and I think I have to follow that angle on the east side. Otherwise I'll run into the.
So the addition is just square?
You see.
Yeah. It'll, it'll be pronounced against the original building.
I'll give the rest of that three. I just want to have a quick conversation with the commission about, about that parapet. Looking at the photos. The elevation drawing shows that the parapet is sticking up on the, on the street side. Um, but from the photos and from the street view, it, it doesn't really stick up above. The trim from the street side. So you're not going to see it in the street. So I guess the question is.
Let me see what.
This parapet from.
You see that corner?
You'll see whatever you can see above the, the addition. I guess the question I had is to the applicant's statement earlier. Of rebuilding that parapet with wood as opposed to keeping it block.
I, I would counter that with who's supposed to keep the asperg material as much as possible. And we're not supposed to be favoring it.
Any other questions? If that's the only comment, do we think we can ask the applicant that that's common to, to bottom by the application? Do we think they need to see another drawing?
I would say if you're coming, were you saying coming from that? Corner. From the proposed new corner. Coming back in particular.
That might they have to do a little bit of the scene to make sure they've got enough there to, to.
Yeah.
I just worry that they're going to be so. So little space to seal. Or would you think just maybe doing something on the inside rather than outside? If you understand the question?
Yeah.
If they come back from the, from the proposed. Or they're going to be.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
A portion of the existing.
Yeah.
See them die into that.
Okay, that, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And, and the applicant is willing to amend the application as such?
Yeah, can it be a staff approval?
We don't have to bring it back.
So you agree.
So are you comfortable with, uh, if we give that statement of from the current drawing corner to move that, that perpendicular from the proposed corner? It's just a door opening is where it'll die. Right. So not the permission for you to, you'll process that?
Yes, okay. I, I guess.
That, that be stated, uh, are you willing to amend your application to that change?
Yes. On item oh six G V twenty-three oh four twenty-one twenty-nine Jackson Street, I move to.
Any questions, motion? All those in favor? Aye. Yes? Motion passes. Moving ahead to item number seven, seven G V dash two three dash three five dash zero four, five one two City Park. Settle. Square tell the truth, the whole truth, the truth.
Daniel May.
Uh, this is, uh, proposed. Uh, the proposed work description is for landscaping and. 指的是for land, all grass over yard and like approximately fifteen yards of black mulch. The three yard providing twelve outdoor, ten set on twenty burn legs, twenty mossed legs. Twelve, uh, two, sorry, apologies. Two gold, um, five hydrangea tree, five oak tree, five hydrangea, twenty boxwoods. And twenty euro for landscaping plan and to install five to ten blue stone steppers. At the main business meeting, the commission had no comments or feedback for the applicant. And this application was placed on the agenda because of the removal of the grassy area rear yard. And it is replaced with fifteen yards of black mulch. Uh, staff recommendation and the staff recommends approval of any all clarifications be submitted to H B O staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of certificate. The basis for the staff recommendation and that it's generally consistent with the three one one six thirteen standard for site improvement A. And then German Village Guidelines massing lot coverage and green space page one of five.
Anything else to add? Questions, comments in the commission? Go purpose to purpose again.
Yeah.
The motion?
On item G V twenty-three oh five dash twenty-four, five twelve City Park Avenue, I move to approve as submitted.
Second. Any questions, motion? In favor? Aye. Yes? I think the motion passes. Uh, moving ahead to item number eight, G B dash two three dash zero five dash zero two five, five oh two South Third Street. Right hand. Square tell the truth, the whole truth, the truth.
Yes.
Please state the record.
Great.
Thank you. Cool.
Um, the proposed work description. Just for instance, the existing four eight divided by fifty nine and a half inch tall sign on the front east elevation. And install a new thirty nine inch by fifty two inch tall sign. Print it on a, a half inch black P D C in the same location of the existing sign. The staff analysis is at the main business meeting, the commission asked the date of the existing sign. Staff. Sign is current size and the applicant provided that it's. There had been no major changes to the size installation. The proposed sign is approximately fourteen square feet. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval with any all clarifications be submitted to H B O staff. For pivotal precautions of it, the following conditions and the condition being that the sign to be installed into a mortar and not the face of the brick. The basis for the staff recommendation is three one one sixteen standards for site improvement C. And German. German Village Guideline Design Conscriptions Guidelines. Signed. And that's.
It looks, it seems like, um, the existing sign is a little bit lower in the mounting. The type of, it's, when you look at the, the. Facade, you see the dark door, the dark glass windows. And there is an actual brick coursing line that those windows and those doors hold. And it seems to me that the top of the sign should align.
To go back to page one of the application. Zoom in. It's like the top of the sign being aligned to the bottom of those. Zoom in.
You think?
Yeah, this is, I'm sorry, you're just replacing the plastic panel, right? You're not replacing.
The whole sign would be removed.
Be a little bit smaller.
Likely smaller.
The objective is for it to be centered. I see what you're saying where the brick changes direction. It's going to be centered in the brick area that's going as horizontal. Between the two windows, yes, sir.
But that, that's the existing sign, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So it'll be smaller.
Yes.
So the rendering is a little off.
So the red, that might be a little. If I.
That's the scale of the rendering.
Yeah. And if it, if it lines with that course, I think it should be known as the, the. Top of the sign. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's one or two obvious in my opinion. Either the top of the sign aligned to the bottom of the window windows or. Vertically centered between. Even two. Especially the board, okay, it's either the top of the sign being aligned with basically the, the, the stone above the windows.
Correct. The bottom, the bottom of the stone, right?
Yeah. Or the center of the sign vertically being aligned with the center of the window vertically, so it's just all.
Correct. That, that is more in line with what I.
Okay. The center. Will be what you just said. Composition to. So this is us. Do we have size requirements? We typically do, but it's a, a existing approved sign. Appropriate for the individual businesses and this is a large sign.
Yeah.
Right, but it had individual panels for individual, but I'm just curious.
I'm just, it's the size, not the size of them.
Okay.
I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't approve anything that. Big now if it was new.
Yeah.
It's basically replacement.
Stay away from me, you're taking the project.
So there's any, any, uh, anybody against? Having sign as certification being centered vertically on the windows.
Sounds good.
Is there a motion?
The new sign be centered between the two. Answered between the two windows.
Yes.
Second. Any questions, motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Let's have it, motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item, well, number nine has been removed, withdrawn. Item number ten, G B dash nine, sorry, G B dash two three dash zero five dash zero two seven. Nine seven zero, Decker Street. If you please, the bridge to right hand. Square tell the truth, the whole truth, the truth. Please state your name of the record.
Uh, the proposed work descriptions for exterior building alteration to garage doors. To replace two eight foot wood garage doors with two nine foot flush wood doors. Doors to be the C H R one X trim number eleven and A to match the existing color. Uh, replace trim and setting. Things to match existing. Um, at the, at the staff analysis. Meeting, the commission indicated. To show. The commission requested an elevation. The applicant submitted new photos of the interior of the garage and part of the historical garage, past and structural garage, past and structural. Is the applicant's belief is a one car garage to access out the alley or was the mouth of the shed? Applicant provided. The floor and ground are the same. Staff provides sandboard maps showing the auto garage in a similar location of nineteen twenty-one and nineteen fifty-one sandboard maps. Uh, staff recommendation is that staff recommends approval with any all clarifications be submitted to H B O staff prior to the issuance of certificate for following conditions. And the staff recommended the conditions. And the staff recommended primary elevation to be stamped prior to the H one. Two one one six eleven to the operation. Elevation be stamped. One, two, three, four, six, nine, eleven and twelve. German Village Guidelines were. One, two.
I'm doing this though.
She's managed to hit that ice. So she wanted one large door and I said absolutely not. That's not in the guidelines. There's no. Hardship in this case in terms of turning radius or whatever. So I suggested widening the doors a foot. In an effort to try to keep her from bouncing around. I submitted a jam detail of the trim. And I brought hard copies because it was so late. If you want to see that, if a nine foot is appropriate. I did send in interior photos. The garage has been expanded in both towards the north, the front and towards the south. It is historic. Work in some way, so it's contributing, but it's been altered quite a bit. And we would put the trim back the way it is now and the side, the drop siding. Seven copies of that.
They're expanding, is it?
That's just a reprint of the sheet plus. Detail of garage doors.
They're expanding towards the middle.
Both six inches out and six inches in. The problem with spanning all in the middle, it doesn't get me there. And I'm a little concerned about. Structure being so thin there. It's just these old structures are pretty, uh, like. Moving further out and further in, but not the same proportion according to the draw.
Right, okay, got it.
There's an electric sub panel to the right of that photograph. Inside the garage, so I gotta avoid that.
One, one question for you. Looking at the. Page one, yeah. Pushing up that door on the left. Out six, eight inches. What's that going to do with the drive? Dropping off?
Not, not me. She's, she uses the right bay. Um, she's got. I figured could just. I figured.
It looks like. She's got it back and out. It looks like. Not that, not coming in. The way that trim's born.
My, my only concern is, is, is it going to have to be more work than what they're expecting because of that? April. Drop off there.
Well, you know, I, I really didn't look at that up close, frankly. I. I'm more started with trying to get on your door first, it's a group. Then we'll deal with the driveway. I think the garage originally entered off the alley when it was a single car. I don't.
G B twenty-three oh five, G B twenty-three oh seven nine seventy-eight. It's free to be approved this.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Yes.
I think that's the first time I've done.
Find that Harbison.
Item number eleven, G dash two three dash five dash zero two eight. This is thirty East and forty East Columbus Street and Saint East and forty seventh Pearl Street. Want to settle? Want to settle? Square tell the truth, the whole truth, the truth.
Right.
Please state your name of the record.
Uh, this, the proposed work description will lock combination to combine three adjacent. Uh, for thirty, forty East Columbus and seven six two Pearl Street and zoned our two presidential district. And code uses three residential units. Three building on this. Eighty-four East Columbus and thirty East Columbus. Should. Inside, windows from outside and one inch list. Forty Columbus is to replace the industrial metal windows where they are currently burnt in. Openings, the new windows to match existing. The forty East Columbus is to install a new door on the west facade. Uh, seven six two Pearl Street is to install new windows on each side of the existing door on the, the south facade. And install new stair access to the new roof deck. Um, staff analysis including summary of any previous review at the main business meeting. Have to be clarified that the egress window, egress window for the windows for the Columbus. And requested staff perform the site visit to assess the windows. For the windows at forty Columbus Street, staff found the windows were in repairable condition. On Google Street View, staff found there were shutters in the windows from at least two thousand and seven to twenty twenty and there is no. Having sandboard map showing the building location at eighteen ninety-one, nineteen twenty-one and nineteen sixty-one. The buildings of thirty East Columbus and forty East Columbus appeared when built prior to nineteen twenty-one. And the building at seven six two Pearl Street was constructed prior to nineteen sixty. Uh, staff recommendation, staff recommends to continue the application to allow the applicant time to revise the design to repair the windows on forty East Columbus. Um, the basis for staff recommendation. Is three one six eleven, one, two, three, four, five, nine and ten. Three one one six thirteen standards for site improvements A. German Village Guidelines for windows, um, one. German Village Guidelines for dormers and skylights, two, three, two and three. German Village Guidelines for massing roof shapes and elements for six. And German Village Guidelines massing rhythm of building openings on page seven.
Anything else to add?
Yes.
Questions, comments in the commission?
If this applicant didn't ask me, I think, but how does the applicant feel about repairing the windows proposed to?
Uh, I think the preference would be to replace them. With something that was of similar quality looking into a new steel window. Probably makes it too large for an improved window model to be used. But it's probably a form of a custom metal window. But similar, uh, divisions and profiles for the clients.
Yeah, I will, I will note that the, the way it's drawn currently. It's not drawn to operate the way the existing ones do on the elevations. So if we can go that route, we're going to make sure it's modified that it is a.
It would, it would be, uh, required to follow the safe then.
Yeah, I would, I would. I would prefer. On one voice.
Sure.
Not sure about where I am replacing her.
Yeah, with staff having gone out and found they were in repairable. Condition. I would, I would lean towards staff's assessment barring. That's just that I'm finding somebody who do the work and the question becomes hardship, which would be not the initial application. Um I do question. So the last time you're here. That egress is now a door. We talked about window. Is there. Punching holes in historic fabric is always something that we're sensitive to. Um is there a reason for a door versus a window? Uh just a design preference. From a design perspective, I, I struggle. It looks like it's, it's a door that wants to have a transom, but it's trying to be. A window. I'm not quite sure what it's trying to be. What is that? Uh go to page eighteen of the application. It's on uh drawing six point one.
One thing to note. It appears. Uh there's definitely a little above the portion or. Appears as though there was a, a, a opening in this location previously that has been. And. So we can see that as a, like a shelf angle. Where there was once probably an opening or maybe plans for a future opening. The brick is older, but it does seem like there was some past construction that would. Be associated with something.
See no evidence of. See sand back or something short. It's, it's interesting. It looks to be the same length as the other one.
It's a same elevation.
Only it's the same length. There's no, obviously a real lock at the bottom. The window sill.
Correct.
Yeah. So something. The relock is not at the common phone. Or the. Staff, please zoom out a little bit more. Looking for something there. Wondering or. Pointed to something.
Yeah, the only real is that horizontal line. Four bricks down from the. Go higher. The cursor needs to go up higher to get the line I'm talking about.
It looks like.
Higher, a little higher. Yeah, there's like a dark horizontal line, a little higher still for the cursor right there that could indicate like a, like a steel angle.
Yeah, yeah, we see that. Yeah. Yeah, you can see kind of the smaller bricks kind of sitting in that vertical line straight down. It looks like it came down to that, that robot course down below.
Um so. How we visit on the other side of the building and look like there were, there was evidence of three window openings being closed on the other side.
Yeah, it's funny these windows could. Twenty story builds here. What's funny is that some of the buildings are probably.
Way too new.
Yeah, than that. They're still destroyed. Yeah, they may not have been. Using my little. Hard to see how high that. It looks like, it looks like the window went from. Halfway up all.
Yeah, you look at the mix of. More percentage art brick in that.
Right.
In the opening.
That's what, that's what draws why.
Which is gives, gives it away to me that it wasn't, wasn't window.
It's a.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it was just. Yeah. Yeah.
So for me, having that evidence, I'd be more, I'd be okay with a window going back or putting a door that's. And a window that matches the size of the others. I. Right? I think we talked in the last meeting about should it be a full wood or should it be half wood? Well, we didn't have any severance. Right? I'm doing. It's a half. Or.
I, I, well, I think to me. A door is fine, but I think you need to address the, the original mason reopening and bring that back.
Yeah.
Can I figure how you want to fill that with a door and something else?
Like a side light or something.
Side light or, or even a panel or something.
Uh aside from the windows and then this potential door. Are there any other comments on the application that's been?
So why was. Present in the last. This.
Just look, they try to slow. Third ward street actually said.
Still not making.
Also added that, so that's the actually icon opposed the, the. Turn uh above grade patio of privacy and maybe jarred back and back. The screening would put up and.
Well, the screening probably said. Blend in, but I don't know. I keep looking at it. I'm thinking, and I know it doesn't work with the interior. Layout that I'd rather see the stair run the other way or see something that's not just that. Vertical piece of butterfly and actually ream the length of the building. I'm almost thinking is there. I, I, I know it would get complicated to bring that complicated stair up and not have the doghouse. I mean, because then it's an open stair, but.
The other.
Could you have a pergola cover or something that ream the width of that?
The other thought is your, your view of this is from the street is far right of that elevation.
Yeah, so I mean, it is, it's pressed back from the street, you know, you would see it from the alley. Yeah, I looked at, I, I did look at those.
It's kind of a funky mid-century. Edition.
I don't think it's gonna be seen from anywhere besides. Backyards.
Yeah.
I'm a swish of relief from. I mean. Just the. Yeah, it's how thin it is in that elevation that bothers me, but. It's okay without shut up.
You might have to shut up every day. Would that, I would take that back to the applicant if. If there's support for making it wider, it might be able to catch you for that to have a little bit of storage up there. But obviously you're.
Yeah. Something, because it just looks.
Is there room to, to come wider to the south with it? I think that that, that would remove the usable space on the, on the, the roof deck. I think you still want to keep it off of the existing wall a little bit. You don't want it to appear to be. Put plans to say that. Do anything for. And put a rooftop bar up there.
Well, that's like. Extend the cover. That is a vertical. Yeah, something to.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to actually be. Open space below.
Right.
You could just expand it to the south on the roof. Actually, you got storage space there or.
Well. Is that like, is that like a plan? Sure, how it interfaces with the dwelling unit to the south. We see our key plan.
On the top of the other unit. The. Although across the street. Oh. Yeah, that, that'd be on top of the, top of the adjacent roof. Yeah.
So it's one in the back. I'm not very, not the best.
I'm gonna worry about a person. Yeah, it's. It is a funky little building. There's a bunch of funky little.
Yeah.
Bricks too. It's really a big building property. Any other comments that was being proposed aside from the.
And mirror on the south side.
Talked about those at the last meeting.
Okay.
Um it's really driven by. Interior walls.
I know that are. Education on the south side because. Intersection that gave a. If it was length of the structure that. Appeared to be less than, less than.
And the doors offset each other is just.
Yeah, right.
I, even though it's got a gable intersection, I would say. With the length of the.
Yeah. No questions.
So. Probably comfortable with the amendment to the application. If you want to see any drawings of the. I think. I think the, the, the door and the windows are still outstanding. The options are. Prove. Separate, a split in the window. Come back a. Door windows. Or. I think we can amend it.
I think they're continuing the whole fight. Yeah.
You want to see it then?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
The applicant, would you like to continue or?
Yes, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, just there. That window slash door.
Sorry, it's on GB twenty-three oh five oh. I move to continue for resolution of the door window issue on the proposed address. Second.
Uh any questions on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Against? I say that motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to. Well, GB two dash two, repeat as you're in two Jager. As chairman, I'm recused from this one. Right? If you please raise your right hand. Square tell the truth, the whole truth, that's the truth.
I do.
If you see your name for the record.
Oh, go.
Thank you. Cool.
This is an exterior building alteration uh. For changes to an approved design to remove all three windows from the north elevation of the addition. The staff analysis including summary of any previous review is that the addition was initially approved at, at the March twenty twenty three hearing and GB dash twenty-two zero three dash zero two three. Main business meeting, the commission. About information on how far from the lot line the addition is and how close it is to being a fire rated windows. The applicant responded and provided the addition is um. One point nine feet from apartment and any distance less than three feet is not permitted to have openings that are not fire rated. The applicant provided the site plan. Uh staff recommendation is staff recommends approval with any all clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval required, patients to. And three one one six standards for alteration, one, two, nine, ten and eleven. And three one one six twelve standards for new construction, A, C, H, I, K and N.
Anything else to add? Just for a clarification, this is all just due to fire rating basis, right?
Uh if you guys, if you, so the new option, if you guys have the fire rating. And what are the options for you guys as fire rating or you're just getting rid of the windows?
Don't think there's any problem getting rid of the windows. I just want to make sure that was the driver behind it all.
Yeah.
Yeah. I couldn't tell you what the fire rate window requirements are, but uh. Yeah.
But I, I didn't know if you guys. If they had any that was fire rate.
Yeah, just you better. Get ready.
Yeah.
Any question? Any question on the application? If there's not, is there a motion?
Uh item number twelve, GB twenty-three oh. GB thirty seventy-two Jager Street um. Move to a third as presented.
Second.
I'll just make the note that this is a previously recent application approved, just being. Any question on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Against? I say that the motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Alright, moving on to item thirteen, GB dash two, three, dash zero, five, dash zero, three, zero. Seventy-six east, seventy-six east. Also, eight oh four. If you please raise your right hand when you're settled. Square tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth.
Yes, sir.
Please say your name for the record.
Nathan Sampson would be all Sampson needs.
Cool.
The proposed work description includes variance recommendation landscaping, hardscaping and exterior building alteration. Their transit stop the street. Um that's three three two one four one four lot area reduced through part of lot area for a single family dwelling to two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one point eight eight square feet from six thousand square feet. Um it's three, 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 two, two, one. Or about reduced size from six feet, ten feet to, sorry. Disagreement from ten feet. Three, three, two, point two six minimum side yard east reduced size of the minimum side yard setback to zero feet from five feet. And three, three, one, two, point four nine off street parking spaces to reduce the required parking spaces per dwelling to zero from the required two. For landscaping is to remove two white birch trees for aesthetic purposes and damage, to remove two service barrier trees for aesthetic purposes. To install a red button. To the landscape. Plan the budget for the landscape plan. Hardscaping is to install moving around full fourteen feet by twenty feet on a pool there. The full level of. Full decking to. To all the. At the east side of eight oh four City Park Avenue, the north south west side is seven six. Across the street. Eighty-six twenty-five, six, five, twenty-seven, twelve, back to. For uh. To install sixteen pack lights in the on board W L one three. To install. Major people on three, on the. On three foot deep. And fourteen inch deep limestone cap with an eight inch. The top panels and white age be seen Sherwood Sherwin Williams Iron ore seven oh six nine. There's a. So the building's ready to paint the siding and brick Sherwin Williams Black Swan S W six two seven nine at eight oh four City Park Avenue. And to paint the side of Williams. W seven oh six nine and seventy-six Apple Street. Um the staff analysis including summary of any previous review. In the main business meeting, the commission recommended the applicant come prepared to discuss the proposed parking variances and the six foot tall park segments. The commission also requested drawing of the proposed training wall and details on how materials will ball and steps. The commission also requested drawing indicating more than paint will be for eight oh four City Park Avenue. And emphasize the commission typically does not support painting, proof and paint to make it right. The applicant provided updated materials. At the March twenty twenty three hearing, the commission voted to approve and do door openings for eight oh four City Park Avenue addition. Um the commission supported the design, but the AC to be the corner of the garage. A COA has been issued a, 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 and received a revised drawing showing the new residence location. The staff recommendation is the staff recommendation. I'm taking the application deadline with German village guidelines and city code. The basis for the staff recommendation is three one one six eleven standards for alteration, one, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven and twelve. Um three one one six thirteen standard for site improvements A. German village guidelines for color, three. German village guidelines for fences and walls, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. German village guidelines, sightlining, tree furniture, pools, fountain, garivos, one, two, three, five and six.
Anything else to add?
I think that, I think that you covered all of the areas for the supplement. Information. The patient is covering at this point kind of three main questions. And one is the. Uh proposal landscape for the front yard, which is. Uh, proposal landscape for the front yard, which is of eight oh four, which is the corner of Costa and City Park, where the materials provided. Also, the landscaping plan for the space in between the two strip. Um, with the five from six feet to four feet. For the over to down to that point, the. The idea of the retaining wall, uh, there are. The plant or bed retaining, uh, along that. Street. Facade, uh, just broke. A different way. Uh, personal property. As far as the very. We are working to do two things. One, legitimize some existing conditions, which are technical variances. The, uh, we do get to remove one of the requests for variance, whether that be lot size. Um, the B Z A responded and said it's a lot record at this point, so the size of it is not, we wouldn't have to legitimize that. So it's simply set up and the question about. On site party. And so since the last hearing, we also, um, developed, uh, basically a diagram showing. Uh, upon, you know, the. These days request, if there was not, um, onsite parking, then the curb cut would need to be removed in that, so that we can talk about that, but. Uh, as it's now, you know, along that street with the curb cuts and with the, how the. Aprons are broken up. From sentences. Uh, with removal of that apron, we actually. Increase that to three legal parking spots, this. Uh, parallel parking for long parking. I think eighteen feet for pulling spot. Eighteen feet diagram to show, you know, that curb space and and what that, uh, may allow. A C, uh. It was just. We're fine since this, simply because we said we'd come back with a landscape plan. To help understand, you know, placement of those, we didn't have a landscape plan for. And we're talking about the new apertures. Um, so we showed them on this site, but also on the landscape plan, just on the. Uh, to give some idea of privacy there. And I think from material standpoint, uh, we're trying to maintain German village guidelines on, you know, type of material, um. Plantings, fencing. Uh, we're talking about. Location inside, and to answer any questions about that. What, you know, say please.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, present for City Park, uh, wherever moving the trees, trees back, so there's, that's been discussed there, but I'm happy to. Um, we're adding about twenty seven feet, about that. Maybe the hedges, we're just trying to. For a lot.
Do you have one, one question on? We do have papers. Uh, I want to ask a couple of questions before jumping into papers. Um, so the first one is. For the parking, um. The parking you're showing is three public spaces going in. Uh, but you're showing ten inches from the curb driveway to the first parking spot. Code. Twenty one fifty one point oh one B says no park within five feet. Of public driveway, public or private driveway. So if that's true, then you're only going to have two spots, please, you're taking away the private added one public spot.
Yeah.
Then my other concern. Is right now is. Two separate parcels. While the current owner is treating it as one. If this property was to sell, it would be two separate parcels, so. Currently, the ask. Factually is asking for. Move law parking requirements for individual us that could someday become an individual address. Uh, as opposed to this is a request for one large person, so I think we. Keep them look. This is a process, use the shared resources across properties to justify removing. And the answer is still required to park. I think I can't, this meeting was. Uh. Like to help the public speaker speak, and then we will continue on. Uh, so, uh, Michael. Yeah, okay, bad writing. With the mic, so I guess I have to speak out.
I can assure. I'm so pine.
You set up.
Okay.
You raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth of the truth.
I did.
Please state your name again for the record.
Michael Gallagher.
Thank you very much. Three minutes.
I've been asked to speak on behalf of John. The email has been. Paint the entire house black with. To remove third parking spaces from a separate joining property. Any notes? This trailer is. As the review of the T sixties never envisioned anything quite as. On the parking issue, parking is and will forever be their premium interim ground during a village. We cannot and should not take place spaces away from the journey property on cost. Both properties may be owned by the same personnel, someone who has a two car garage in Peter or City Park. But don't want. But, but we don't want, we both know what will happen in six months, a year, two years. Some residents are locked in cost too close to intersection costs the city park. So do you believe because there's just enough room for the street to park it legally? You know, apparent, the owner apparently wants to build a low wall between your two parks and property and cost and putting a smooth bill between the two houses. Well, that may be desirable to him and his family. It is not. To cause this unguarded for neighbors and cars. That's standing shot. Uh, on a personal basis, I would just basically like to point out. Painting brick is like getting a tattoo. And I would argue with you, it's easier to get a tattoo removed than it is to remove paint from brick. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Would like to respond to any of the comments made there.
Sure. When, when we're thinking about. The structure. Think, you know, whether I'm bothered, uh, some probably not. I think, you know, this, in the entire structure here on the corner of eight oh four and, uh, St. Martin was. Still. True, it certainly. Um. It's the. It certainly. Question to see. It's the color of the brick is the intent. And that should stay, so we've been the fabric. Of the village, language of the village is red. And some questions that I think are. Then. The paper is simple, you're only able. To live here. And what could move on? Generally, we think it was the top, we didn't realize that to, to paint. Uh. A lot of the first. See, he can. True, and service. A lot of bricks, soft, a lot of a sand blasted vector in the preservation heyday. Um, and it's just bad practice. And as such, need to have some sealant to consolidate to keep it on there. It's not the best choice, but it is what they used. Um. Painting of new brick, there may have been one or two, one or two cases I can remember of, of, of new construction. Um, that was proposed as painted brick. You can't think what there are.
Two garages.
Garages.
Two garages.
Um, so the guidelines do clearly state that to, to avoid painting surfaces that haven't been painted, uh, so it's a. Come down the whole path of. Even if it's a newer construction, I think it's not keeping with the guidelines.
Um, can you share, I guess you have an additional speaker, so.
I think we'll finish that one up, then we'll take it.
I, I, I would just state that I actually. Disagree a little bit with the, the other question that I've spoken so far. Uh, I, I will disagree and agree in different ways. I will say that the examples that you. That you show, particularly, uh. The greener one, it looked like that had been. Merged in some way prior to being painted. Uh, and that speaks to what Anthony was speaking of in regards to kind of consolidation. They painted it all because the brick, I didn't look so good after it had. I, I do think, uh. Historically. And if there are. Literally that were painted prior to the guidelines, that is actually part of the contributing period. Uh, and so we should consider those, those, uh, and since this is a more contemporary structure. It's not currently contemporary, but contributing structure, I would. I could in some world get there. There's going to be a lot more common saves that would have to happen. I think that's where I live, but I think this slippery slope of that would be. Say, well, you're saying that's partly painting of a store for structure was. We paint a.
I'm gonna counter that.
Well, well, let me finish the question.
Okay.
I would say because that structure is. Historically, it's not. Now, it is a period of contributing structure that wasn't paid previously. This is a non-contributing building currently. That's where it happens in my head.
You know, and I'm going to say back in the day when they painted the old brick buildings. It was because it was brick.
Right.
They needed something to avoid the moisture penetration. You've got to remember, paint's expensive now. It was really expensive that, and to. Do it, it really had to functional. It wasn't colored, it wasn't ready, right? It was to seal the brick.
Right, right, right. What happened, we need to discussion about is for new structures. We're looking at varying. One to. Detailing, uh. Materials, right? And so we had thorough analysis. Painting rushing us over on what was previously designed.
We. Pretty dark brown or whatever that color is as one of the variances.
As, as that.
If they're not paying, it's the brick.
Right, so. That's where I am with it, but there'd be deeper discussion that would. Get through.
Personally, not. To paint. But I am opposed to that.
I was, I said.
And also to painting the.
There, there is. There's a concept of. Paint can change. At the same time, there is the question of. Guidelines talked about. When you can change structure, you look at. Uh, and for a, they're an outlier. They, they take a little bit more. Um, investigation. Because they're a problem or structure or. So. I think. It's, it would, it would be part of the conversation to get through in order to approve painting of, of the brick first. And I think there's going to be some conversation about.
I mean, that's about painting the wood structure. At seven sixty, or yeah, seventy six. East. The one in the picture. Has, has proposed. They. Proposed at eight oh four. That front part, it doesn't.
I think I. I'm okay with the painting the wood. I'm okay with.
Yeah, it's one. I have no problem with that.
It's a question. I would say siding is generally painted. I think painting of the siding is acceptable. Um. Conversation about colors, but. There's more. Examples of appropriate painting of the color. Proposed on deciding object.
First one, I don't deny that.
Yeah.
Maybe with the. Take the sound of the.
It's called one by Black Swan, it's not. Doors. Red comment, also for going. For that, which I'm, uh. I think it's dark. On eight oh four, um. So we wanted to think about, uh, I think that we didn't think what we had previously in the previous application. Where it proved to be painted dark to match the windows. So I think that the window, three four sheets, sort of. She's handled that. I think if we just maybe step back from.
Uh, second speaker, Ken Wood. Please raise your right hand. Ken.
Saw the sign. Really just read it more closely today and, uh, came to the meeting just to add my comments. Um, it sounds like you've really addressed the, uh, painting brick, which I can't imagine with anyone. Conceive of that in German village. It's a total. So uh, painting brick, it is, in my opinion, it's such a terrible idea. So at this point in my life, I'm looking at reinvesting in my home, making it better. Put that right across the street for me, paint that brick. Uh, you know, that would contribute to whether or not I renovate my home further. So that's my two cents. Please do not allow anybody to paint brick, especially in what is, that home can't be twenty years old. It is a relatively new structure and it looks brand new. And it's a very nice home. There's no question about it. So on the city park side, it it already has wood on that. That wood was public from the previous structure. And that was always the story and it sure looks like it. It it's fine. It's already painted. You can paint it. Black. I I don't know what type of guidelines lines the German village has for colors and it sounds like black colors. Uh, sorry, if you're not that recall. And it seems like that goes to me. So. So I am directly across from seventy six East Cofe. Directly from the older structure, the frame house. And uh, I would not be my choice, that for uh, but you folks know, I'm I'm sure it looks much better than I do. I just have lived there for forty years and I know what I'm used to seeing. And I've seen plenty of color in the past, actually, since where homeowners painted it without going through the commission process. And they um, they were uh influenced by many authorities when they learned that to repaint them. And there's been some bad colors.
So you're over three.
Appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Sure, thanks. Um. No, that doesn't mean that the fence location came up. Any questions that they've produced from, say, before the comments about the fence location between the two.
Try to talk about the parking.
There is a example photograph in there of a similar fence on some planting bed or taint planting bed as well, just for uh reference to.
The tip move, that's like that behind the first window.
General goes back to the guidelines, page one eighteen, number seven. Keep fencing the rear or lower fence of the front lot, which is, which is technically the the cost of property is the front of lot uh for that one to. Hold it back from. And actually, he tells examples, the rear yard, it's there between two properties and it's very narrow fence. Um, how close together as opposed to a large expanse of fifty something feet.
Um, for uh fences that exist sort of along the property lines in the front yard. I I guess in in trying to understand the guidelines about. All, you know, certain style of fence. Uh, is uh the, I guess, the position of that than than wood or metal? Is it the, is there an intent? Because it's solid to move it back. It's intended for, say, it was more transparent. Could that position, I mean, you know, a lot of times in a more transparent condition, those.
Iron fence is usually up at the property line. Your pick of fences usually are usually up there transparent that you can see through it. The lower board fences, more privacy fences. Those typically rear or we push it back from the structure.
So that, just thinking about it as a definition, a more solid fence, privacy fence, we're looking at is sort of the language.
See fence will. Would this be, here's a four foot fence that's being set up on a tinny wall. That is a. It's just sort of weird. We're trying to deal with a little bit.
Question, I'm trying to respond also to the commission's comments, respond also if, if, you know, if that fence, if we revise that proposal, that fence to uh, if that fence, say, picket fence, there we would not be creating issue necessarily with its placement. I I wouldn't have an issue with.
I would neither.
Uh, I think the the big elephant is the parking.
Yeah.
You want to talk about parking?
Should we talk about first?
I know, we talked about parking. I have a couple of comments.
Okay. Yeah, I I guess my intent was uh knowing that the parking is coming up, seeing if there's any other landscape questions in the fence, just to make sure that we're understanding. But.
Um, the the entire patio that's being proposed is custom placed concrete and typically our commission tries to put um tries to make those areas more pervious back there. I realize that there's obviously you're putting pull in there's a certain area around it. They can place concrete, but is it possible that the patios to the south and to east could become a pervious paver?
I guess, like, I feel like I I do like pervious surfaces like that and uh I had brought up pea gravels to the client as well. Um, so I can circle back on that. Uh, I think uh when it comes to pervious, I know in the past we've done some work on fact street. And we did loose stone, but we had a uh forest, you know, grout. So I don't know what you consider pervious. If there's, you said pavers. They're just trying to understand if there's.
Uh, it's usually pavers with a same joint.
Okay, yeah.
On a, you know, on a compacted.
Base. So I'll take a look at that.
And then while we're talking landscape, I just um wanted to make a case for the emalikeers.
Sure.
I think, I know they're they're regular. And that, you know, you you're pointing to what appears to be a more formalized touch. Line there.
Thirty three. I saw where one was cut down or dislocated. And then when I was looking at them, I get the photo up, but they um they definitely have been cut severely just to keep them out of the way of the foot traffic on the sidewalk. So for me, I just felt like um could I create some privacy with the boxwood hedge and then those larger hydrangeas? So that's kind of where I was with the client. He was a little concerned about being exposed.
Right.
But I got him there uh just in discussions. But because they were struggling and because they've been heavily pruned over the years, I just thought it would stay out and they're pretty steep slopes. I think that's why we lost one of them. So that's, I don't know if you can tell all that.
Yeah, I've walked past there quite a few times. I know they're pretty irregular, but.
I mean, we could add an additional one. Um, if you look at the landscape drawing in the front. Uh, we're, you know, we're taking out two. We're only putting.
You know, trees are removed to try to replace.
So so if you look at and you look at the garage and so you're looking at the southwest corner, we could potentially another tree in that area, just just to the left of the garage.
And that job.
Yeah, right there. Yeah, so we could put me on like you're there. We could do uh magnolia or dogwood.
I think any of those would be.
Be nice.
So then we're still not up to the same compliment, right? Because you're removing two birds, two emalikeers, you're removing four trees.
Right, and I didn't know if planting between the two structures would help to have a positive balance or if that's not the way the commission looks.
Well.
I know it's best practice.
Yeah, yeah, we don't actually. They're, the guidelines don't address it.
We.
West that we tried out.
Yeah.
I mean, these are smaller trees, so hugely contributing.
Yeah, there's a really people are. There's also. Like foliage wise, we've increased. Yeah, it's.
More per. So certainly helps too.
Yes.
And we're not changing any hard speed, so it's all safe.
In the front.
In the front.
Yeah. So that brings us to you are going to add a second tree then.
We'll add a second tree. We'll get that on the side. Yeah, that's okay. I don't know if I could add more trees and still keep the culture correct for the hydrangeas with flowers. I mean, I'm trying to make sure there's.
They need their sun.
Yeah, they need their sun. And we put roses on the fence on the south edge. Um, with another line of hydrangeas at the sidewalk. So we've really stepped in, which was kind of all the step in areas the best we could.
Would there be any uh guidance that the commission could offer for uh Kevin and team to come back with a proposed tree for that location? It could be need a staff approval for that. Or would you want to see?
I think it could be um staff approval of three that were suggested, I think, are fine. Either an emalike or another red boat or. What the pavers. Yeah, we do need them.
I mean, just for the front part.
Okay.
Trying to.
I mean, that's.
Good.
No.
This last landscaping thing, with the landscaping plan or the proposed plan, is there any uh issue with the uh condenser locations with with proper screening within that concept?
You don't have an issue because I don't think it's competitive.
Is, are you just trying to keep them away from the pool? So.
We're just trying to place it with the patio layout and with some other things. We're just trying to give them a little bit of uh push them out of the main spaces.
So it's not being driven by any technical, like, condensing line.
Yeah. Now, I think I just pushed back because there's just empty yard.
Yeah. As long as we feel that we're not going to screen them. Good. The front house.
Okay. That's the last one.
Parking.
Okay. So um, and for my own reference too, you mentioned a section of the parking code with five foot clearance. I just wanted to make sure I noted that because I I was looking. I found this, the town is being blocking a public private drive and it didn't give me a dimension, which I wish it would have, but.
Yeah, I had a CC twenty one fifty one dot O one B promo.
Okay.
And it maybe doesn't apply to this situation. That's the one I.
Okay.
I came across.
Okay.
Do see people parking as they show a lot. Yeah, yeah. I did. I did a quick walk down third street and there those pan lines are are set back. Yeah, so they're painted.
The city has issued tickets on our street.
Kind of, right?
Okay, no, that's.
Um, okay, I wouldn't make the case of it just being a driveway at this point in time. Considered. Right, yes. Consider. Correct. As it is.
Yeah. Um. So. For instance, because we were trying to think about this, a few different acts, right? Um, we're thinking about this as, you know, two structures, you know, single ownership, you know, how can wrestle, how can. Um, and, you know, in these properties were joined at some point, right? There's still the question of that. Over that point, um requirements that come along with that. Um, you know, typically it's like kitchen bath that are going for, you know, a resident kitchen bathroom. Accessory structure on a lot even better for existing non-ones. Um, and I think, you know, definition why this versus that. It it has a a list. But it was set up as an accessory structure whenever they did that. That's outside of what we're talking about here. I just want to. I guess, conceptually, an accessory structure. I mean, you need to think of necessarily just effectively the point. Um, are there help move us in the direction of, you know, it's it's not another house. It's not a residence for someone else. It's treated as an accessory. Structure. The past, they don't rent it or can't rent it. Um, there's been discussions in the past where, you know, if you want to treat it that way under single ownership, that uh, the prime curries can be. Yeah, I can help if it is. You know, if it's.
For clarity, proposing. Combined lots or not combined?
Well, combined lots has its own challenges as well, right? And so trying to find um the path that makes sense, right, interest.
I think you can take that into consideration.
So really good. I could find me lots and state that that is not an.
But see, I I look at this as it was built as a single family residence with all the requirements, etc. That way, even though you've got the kitchens after that for them, until it's firmly attached to the structure to the west. It's actually an extension of that. At that point, it becomes. Capital space that is continuation.
So are you saying then that you would you would rather have? The the grocery parking space than have the curb cut closed?
Hmm, yeah.
I think it's better for the village.
Yeah.
And I don't live in the village anymore and I probably sound like a hipper who could because I've got the only house on my street back to the house. But I am a proponent of of walkable neighborhoods. We should be thinking about larger infrastructure. I understand the burdens. I lived in a I lived in a condo in Chairman Village that did not have off street parking for five years, had to do it every day. Um, and I understand the challenges that can come with it. Um, but I think we should. I I think that it is unfortunately part of a larger conversation of you can always consider individual applications, but we should be trying to push for more walkable. More pedestrian definitely types of things. Off street parking isn't going to drive that in our city. I'll step down my soapbox now. Which was interesting because it was obviously part of it. We just carry this updates to. It is a one for one, I think as well.
If you consider if you drive at one parking spot, then it's a it's a one for one. I I. I struggle with with the whole concept just because I know. A lot of the feedback we get is when there's a big development, first thing people complain. About this, they're not buying the parking for that. Then when we have available. We want to get rid of the apartment that is available currently. It's almost like it's. The 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 suburbs, that's what's biggest for me. I if it was a single lot and it was accessory structure. I think I could probably, but if it's two separate lots, two separate. Properties, it can always be figured.
One parking space as is. I can't get rid of it. My. Shorten that parking drive. You're really looking at the sidewalk in fact or property land in back, whatever that is. So consider if somebody was building a house on this lot, there were no curb cut, we wouldn't let them do a curb cut.
That's that's the irony of this. I agree because it's a working and everything, but then you kind of felt. That the issue where we do have.
I understand. Yeah.
Not enough parking. Be running anymore yet. Impacting the neighbors and their availability to have guest parking right. I don't know what the society is doing.
Put some in parts.
And where it doesn't work. But using that as a as a as a commission.
I'm there for myself.
Boy, I on the other really like the idea. Getting rid of it. Which doesn't belong to us. Doesn't work and there's too much of it exists now, so I'm happy to get rid of curb cut and get rid of another car parked in the yard.
So you got one, two. Like we're two and two right now.
And I I think they should be far too far response for that house, so.
Yeah, so will it's. With the garage on the side of the garage sharing. When did somebody else do that? They just shared.
Why is it that bad?
Sounds like there's three, three against two fours. I don't think you have votes.
I'm um. Four closing the curb cut. Getting the car out of the.
Well, you're three and three, which is still.
Is the tire.
So you need to go complain. There's all.
Exactly, yeah.
So. Yeah. What would you like us to do? I think we I think there's a lot out there that still needs to be.
Yeah. So um I I think let's maybe just run down the the list real quick, just for the the sake of maybe helping to clean this up.
Consider these. So split the. That's getting not the. Awesome.
Okay, so let's do it this way. If we have one application. For eight oh four. Or eight oh four, the non brick portion of eight oh four. And the painting of these seventy sixth needs cut. Yeah, I I don't know if it's better just to separate them by address, but. Eight oh four, painting of non brick landscape plan. Just to help for clarity sake.
Sure.
Um, I think that, you know. Clarity on that, you know. conditions for that for that. About these coffees, awesome. The uh, I think that there's been some landscape comments that we can work with to revise and update for the previous. Consideration, I think that if the painting of that property is a question, I don't know if that's had. Too many uh concerns. I I think that the issues at seventy six remain probably a discussion of fence. Discussion on the parking. The other the other things are straightforward.
Yeah, you can't do the app, the landscaping for that side to resolve the problem, right?
So. Yeah.
Yeah.
I I do have one. So if we're gonna, we're talking about painting of seventy six as an item. Currently, you're showing iron ore for the siding and the Sherwin-Williams caviar. For the windows and doors. I'm calling. They look the same color to me.
Yeah.
I'll I'll leave it up to the people in the commission to.
I they are the same color. They look the same there, but I would say those.
You don't, you don't have samples.
I don't have to tell my house is that color.
Oh, yeah.
So it's. Is that the combination?
Uh, one more now.
So that's the body.
That's the color.
One more. That's the.
Yeah. Essentially.
That's ours or. And I will say that's with some sun fading.
But the question is, is there differentiation enough for the commission of doors, windows trim? And the the siding, the field, the colors even.
The painted all the same color anyway.
That we we asked for the deciding trim or the siding trim siding to be different than the windows. Yeah, and and the difference being between iron ore and caviar.
Yeah.
Is the and the and the caviar being slightly darker than the iron ore.
If the commissioner's okay with it, I'll go with them. Cross side, try to figure it out.
So you can't tell either.
And when first saw this.
Honey and pictures.
Sounds better than. I think we if they're disclosed, it's probably should get some things uh that are comfortable, most that was. Far enough apart.
For the color.
Yeah.
They have to do that. I mean, they seem very similar to me. I agree. Parking, we've had this uh combination or similar combination across our office before. Um, in that case, we've asked for either lighter. You know, body color or lighter trim color to differentiate a little bit. Same same color, just a different shade, I guess, maybe for hue. Tone.
That's gonna sell.
Thank you.
To clarify, is that a guideline requirement or is that a must requirement? I believe that.
Okay, yeah, separate colors for sure, just just.
Yeah.
Separate word colors or separate. That's that's what you read as. That's what I I don't know if we can approve. Colors as new without seeing this physical samples.
Sure.
That's why when we split this up, I want to split up what we can approve now so you can get what you need. So a lot of times, a lot of times, you know, people are. Can be a staff group, can be a same. Right, right. You just see color combinations, just know the gradient difference, you know, if if. Take a step different, but still return to you for. I guess it's that.
I'm I'm okay with that. I've been that's done that before. And if you're comfortable, you're gonna break it back. Cool. So it sounds like you know what you want to break it up into. All right, for uh G B three oh five oh three oh. Uh, break it up into two applications. Uh, first being for eight oh four City Park Avenue. Just for future.
Um, just to clarify, is the. Where we're moving the application or being continued?
Being continued as part of C.
Yeah, we're we're knowing that um. There's. More than. Keep that conversation.
All right, since that, I will be motion to approve. Item G B two, three dash zero, five dash zero.
Motion to split first.
Oh, motion. That was the motion to split. That was the motion that I just made. I'm sorry.
Get motion to split. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any questions on that motion?
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor? Yes. I have a B, which is the seventy six painting, motion approved. Their second?
Second.
Any question on the motion? All those in favor? Against. I said it. Said it, passes. Item C. Continue to correct. Question on that motion? Yes. I said. Seven. All right, thank you, guys. Okay, on to the last. Uh, I'm fourteen G B dash two. Zero one, six two eight, South Sixth Street. Please raise your hand. You should tell the truth. The whole truth, the truth.
Thank you.
Please station anywhere.
Scott.
You're good.
Uh, the project is for an exterior building renovation of a patio door. To remove the existing patio door and demolish approximately six to nine. The new. the staff analysis is at the May business meeting. The commission suggests the applicant come to the hearing. What ladder and what door? Um, the building in six two eight South Sixth Street was constructed in nineteen ninety six to nineteen ninety seven following. And feedback can be utilized by the applicant further to further refine the proposal for review at a future G D C meeting. And the basis for the staff recommendation is noted. There's no action required as three one six eleven. Other differences for all. One, three, five, nine, one, one, six, thirteen. A. Those guidelines.
Anything else to add?
I just wanted to kind of add that the the intent with this is to be able to see more of the yard and patio from the interior of the space, both from an aesthetic perspective as well as being able to watch. And also, this is not necessary. We're not prepared to this. We're not of concept. I'm just interested in getting feedback on what options we may have with respect to adding some other sort of door, adding a additional door or window to the space to permit that view.
Any questions, comments from the commission?
Well, it's a nineteen ninety six house, you know, in the backyard. That's not suitable.
We'll make one question. Typically, typically, we wouldn't allow mixing rate to be cut open.
So it does look like from the elevator. That will be still until, not that really matters too much, but it's still until across the path. That's gonna be some structural work to get that.
And that's all part of the conversation. I wanted to better understand what either recommendations you might have or if the if that would be part of, if we, you know, if that would be one of the conditions improved.
I mean, for us, we just care what it looks like, but from a structural standpoint, you're probably gonna pass. Bear still be, which means you're gonna pour, pull the wall brick out, put it in and then cover it back on, get it to work.
If you let it exposed.
You leave it exposed, don't you thought?
Yeah, actually. Has it improved still being across the back? It was exposed. We opened the cool.
From a contract perspective, ease of installation, one thing you could also look at is if you don't want to have one continuous opening, you could do two sets of double doors with something to support the center. Not sure.
And that's actually one of the things that we were thinking about too was our preference would be just to do two windows. I struggled to be able to find something like that other than our former house at five four eight South Fourth. But the I think the preference. I didn't know if, you know, we don't really know what we what would be.
This is costly to for your choice to run, that could be costly structural. If you shortened up though.
So. Okay. I see a sketch of.
Do windows and lengthen it. The the step larger would be if we were actually doing additional.
As far as windows, we aesthetically or architecturally, maybe it's one in the center. You could do something center like you combo with the door. Again, you want to leave some kind of passing in between so you can support.
Sure.
I'm sorry, a lot of times two, like two big ones and the two smaller windows too. That's something you see a lot. I think we're gonna do a lot more with the goal of contributing.
Yes.
And you can't see anything from the road.
But I, you know, still, we want to, you know, we've lived here since two thousand and seven. We want to be respectful when we're here.
You're always looking back for for another conceptual if you want to get some more feedback on another. Take that picture, just pen sketch on it. I think it's.
Sure.
Okay, get it designed by architect, anything.
Yeah. That's kind of we wanted to see like, is it even pursuing stuff?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Last thing on the agenda.
With my little guy, I didn't have a, I didn't have baby. But I didn't tell him I'll stay on, find an interim until until they're. I'll bring a big Jerry next to me. Yes, this was. I put up, yeah, I put up a potential replacement from my office who does our historic tax paid projects.
He worked with Rachel all the arner project. So that's Jay's.
I think I probably originally in my first.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying the opening you gotta fill first is Jay's before we fill yours.
Well, I think I've got some.
So we have a list currently, sorry. We do have a list of potential candidates that has. But of course, any other.
Finger on the brake here, so make sure.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I'm sure Barrett would do the recommendation.
I've gotta focus my attention. A whole big.
Let's say we just vote, get it done with. Is there a motion to do separate? I think we do it once, maintain it. Maintain this.
So so a good way to do this is to nominate someone and then close the nominations. That works as an election.
I nominate one as a as a vice chair.
Do I nominate Tony as the vice as the chair?
And I move the nomination to be closed.
I move the nomination to be closed. Favor.
Well done, Tony.
Is there is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Is there a second? Eighteen.